Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our July 2nd Board Business Meeting. We were in executive session, so may we have a motion to move out of executive session by Jan, second by Linda. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion is unanimous. Now, we move into our reorganization meeting.
Welcome to the reorganization meeting of the Webster Board of Education. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'm pleased to administer the oath of office for our elected and re-elected members, Linda DiAgardi, Tammy Gerauski, and Maria Rogillo. Will you all please stand?
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Member, Webster Board of Education, according to the best of your ability?
I will.
Do?
I will.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you would sign your oath and just pass it on to me, that would be great.
The first order of business is the election of board officers. I will now entertain nominations for President of the Board of Education for the 2019-20 school year.
I would like to second that, but I would also like to say something. First of all, I'd like to thank Tammy Gerauski. She has done an excellent job as President this year. She presides -- as President, she tends to the agenda. She presides over meetings. She's the spokesperson for the Board. She's the signator. She implemented learning walks, and she has spent countless hours in our building. And I would like to thank her for her service and nominate her, which has already been done, so. You've done a stellar job.
Thank you.
I know. You beat me to it.
And we need to have a roll call vote. Maria?
I -- yes.
Jan? Sue?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations?
For President?
For President. I declare the nominations closed. The second order of business is -- or would you like to do your oath? Or should I do the?
You do your oath.
Do the oath now? Okay.
And do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of President, Webster Board of Education, according to the best of your ability?
I do.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Okay. I will now entertain nominations for the Vice President of the Board of Education.
I would like to say something, please. I would like to nominate Linda DiAgardi for Vice President. In addition to stepping in when Tammy is unavailable, she provides over the budget workshop and is very effective behind the scenes. I would like to thank you for your service and really hope that you're willing to do this again.
So you nominate?
I would like to nominate, yes.
Mike seconds?
And you'll second.
Okay.
My motion's -- nomination's too close.
Good idea.
Second.
Thank you.
And we need a roll call vote. Maria?
Yes.
Sue?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Are there any other nominations?
But I have something else to say. Just Tammy and Linda, you guys make a great team. You were handily re-elected, and you complement each other's working styles very well. It's a pleasure to be working with you.
Thank you.
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Vice President, Webster Board of Education, according to the best of your ability?
I will.
Congratulations.
Do you want to do my oath? Or do you want to do that later?
Sure.
Here you go, Cindy. And next, we have the oath of Cynthia Cushman, our Board Clerk, who does an outstanding job for all of us, each and every day, no matter what is needed, no matter when, absolutely professional at all times.
Yes.
She is.
Thank you.
Cindy, do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of District Clerk, Webster Central School District, according to the best of your ability?
I will. Thank you.
Okay. Can we just grab a second, please?
I don't want to hang around. Come on.
I'm happy for her.
Getting married.
We'll see you guys at every bunch of workouts. They heard you were presenting.
Hi, everybody.
He's the middle.
The taller one?
Which one's getting the taller?
Yeah. And that's Cece, his fiancee.
So the taller one's the one who lives in front of us?
Yep. Okay.
Nice family.
Thank you. Yeah, they insist up here.
You can't be a double date. We'll see if they have a job over up here. Because if I fire him, then he can work with me. Yeah, I mean, it won't even come next year.
Are we okay?
You know, it takes a year.
So if we can resume our reorganization agenda, we have elected officers and taken the oath of office. If we move down to district appointments, I understand we may take A through double F. I'm sorry, double G. In all of these appointments, can we have a motion to accept those appointed?
We do have one adjustment. Double D, the Medicaid Compliance Officer, is going to be Colleen Armstrong.
Yes.
It cannot be me.
Okay.
Because I am the Financial Certifying Officer for the Medicaid reimbursement, so I cannot do both.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you, Brian.
Are we going to double I? Or do we go with double I? Do you see it from here? Go down to here.
It's not printed on here. Okay.
Yep.
Through double I, please.
So A through double I.
A through double I.
With the correction.
With the correction.
With the correction of Colleen Armstrong as?
Medicaid Compliance.
Medicaid Compliance Officer.
I make a motion?
And I will second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you. Motion carries. Further, look at. All of the depositories of district funds, in accordance with general municipal law, Section 10, all banking institutions listed will have a maximum investment level not to exceed the general fund budget. Can we have a motion, please, to accept the district designations?
Yes.
Moved by Maria and second by Jan. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All in favor? Yes, thank you. This is so wordy. Next, types of collateral, the official newspaper. Cindy, do we need motions for all of these?
No, you can do them together.
So can we have a motion to accept all designees within, in accordance with general municipal law, the following are acceptable types of collateral, and the accounts and those listed in charge of those petty cash accounts are included in this document.
I so moved.
Moved by Jan, second by Sue. All in favor?
Aye.
Classroom accounts, okay. And?
You can do all the necessary.
Okay, thank you. So we're looking at all of the school accounts, all of the fees and charges for athletic events, rental of buses. We can move that all of these fees and changes be combined into one motion.
I just have one question.
Yep.
About letter A, the Superintendent of Schools, is this also and/or his designee? Does that need to be specified?
To make transfers, you mean?
Yes, to make transfers. Or is it just the Superintendent?
Roman numeral six.
Roman numeral six, yes.
Under Necessary Resolutions, A. Isn't that something that, Brian, do you make transfers? Do you make transfers?
Yes, number one that doesn't.
So I think it should be Superintendent of Schools or his.
Or his designee.
Or his designee. So I'll make a motion with that change.
Okay.
To accept these necessary resolutions.
And I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Cindy, you've got that?
Got it.
Perfect. Thank you. I believe that concludes the business of the reorganization meeting. Do we need to move out of that? Can we continue on to regular business?
So moved.
So you approve everything all the way through regular, which is all the actions?
Positions?
All the way to other actions, right?
Yep.
Oh, yeah. Is, okay, we voted through J, right? I'm sorry, I forgot to catch that one. The $35,000 limit per change order, is that sufficient?
That is the maximum allowable by the state.
Correct.
Yep.
Oh, it's maximum allowable by the state?
Correct.
And it's, okay. It doesn't inhibit your?
Nope.
Your ability to?
Anything over $35,000 has to go to the state.
Has to go to the state, even? Okay.
You see, the one change, athletic commissions, no fee for students at all. Most of the county schools are going to that.
Oh, yeah.
Excellent.
As well, so we had previously done no for Webster, a dollar for other, but we're just, all students are the same.
I do have a question, too. I'm assuming that all, as I read this at home, too, that all the increases in salary are per their contracts?
So the increases for salaries are, these are all non-contractual employees. These are part-time help.
Oh, part-time.
That we appoint on a year-to-year basis. Substitutes. It's mainly substitutes.
Okay, I saw that, but I.
And the part-time kid positions.
Okay. Thank you.
With the minimum wage adjustment?
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, we changed, Cindy, I think it was last year or the year before, we started doing the split where suggested where we change them. You guys act on them at the reorg meeting, but it's changing in January.
Right.
So you wouldn't have to do this every single January as well.
Is everyone okay with your reorganization meeting agenda? Moving on to regular business, we do have a change to the agenda. We don't typically have liaison reports, but we do this evening because we have Stacy Peters and Alice Fedek Featherly, who wanted to join us. Welcome, you ladies, and thank you so much for all that you do on behalf of this district. Your leadership has been phenomenal.
Thank you for letting me come. Thank you. Thanks for letting us come. We can't believe we're at the end.
This is it?
Like, we're stunned. I'm just like, I know, I'm like, I've gone through emotions and just like, you know, I mean, we're still going to be very active. I'm going to chair at Schrader.
I'll be chairing at Spry. We'll be working on program together.
Yeah, but we'll be programming chairs together, so we're very excited about that.
But it'll be different. It's different to be in charge versus just running committees.
Yeah.
It's wonderful. What's that?
Said, "That's wonderful."
Oh, thank you. Thank you. No, go ahead.
Are you able to run again or be appointed again after?
After a year, yeah.
Yes.
That's good to know.
Yes, yes.
After a year?
I think so, right? It's usually, it's, they're one-year, what is it, a one-year, how do we say, a one-year term with a two-year limit?
Right, right.
So that's how it's said. So like, our treasurer is only doing one year, so we have a new treasurer that's starting. And same thing for our, well, our secretary just kind of picked up and stuff where someone resigned, and she just did the one year. So that's, you know, sometimes it's good, you know, to have that. But this position is, I definitely feel the two years is needed to get your, kind of, your feet wet, and it's hard to know what to answer and everything. And now I feel like, oh, my God, I just got into it, and now it's like, okay, you're out. But it's good. I think we're ready for a change.
Yep.
So I just wrote down just a few things, just to recap quickly. I know you guys are busy. Our vaping program went tremendous. We were very excited about that. And we actually met with Janine Sanger again, and we're going to do this again in the fall time. And we're tweaking a few things and stuff. We, it was great. Janine's son actually ended up coming, and he was in his middle twenties, so he offered some great insight. So it kind of gave us some different ideas for what we want to do maybe next fall, but we are going to do that again, so we're excited. Do you want to go?
Oh, the locker love. We did the sidewalk painting and the blow pops and the locker love before, I think it was finals?
Yes. It was during AP finals and all exam times.
And that went over well.
Yeah.
And Meet the Candidate Night, you all know how that turned out.
Yeah.
And we are going to talk to Jill about some of these things, like Meet the Candidate Night. Perhaps that should stay with the programming committee, because there's a bit of, there's a lot of pickup of gathering questions and going through that routine, that if you could take that off the president's plate, it might go a little more smoothly.
And since we're going to be in programming, and we've done it for two years.
We kind of know it has to happen.
Yeah. And the great new thing we did this year was Students Ask the Questions, which was phenomenal.
Wonderful.
And we got great, great feedback from that. And when we followed up with Krista afterwards, we decided it's definitely something we're going to do again. So, yeah, so we're excited, and we're thinking maybe even having students given a chance to submit questions, you know, maybe something along the lines. But, yeah, it was a great feel, I think, to have the kids there, and great insight on their part. And we're ending our membership. We are so excited, over 1,400 members. This is like an all-time high for us in over 10 years. So we are very, very excited, and it's just all good things. And then, yeah, our 60th anniversary is going to be in September, so we've got some fun things planned for that. Thank you to everybody who submitted their little memories and stuff. So the calendar team is working very hard on that, and they're going to do some fun things. So, yeah, and.
And we found a second president.
Yes.
We have co-president.
Yes.
So we have two.
So it'll be Jill Jones, who many of you probably already know Jill's from Plank North, and Kelly Lape is the other one.
Also from Plank.
Also, yeah, also from Plank North. So they've, so it'll be great to have the two. And then, I don't know if any of you are familiar with Jeff Tara, his wife Kelly Tara's Blue House Six Science Teacher, who's, shout out to Kelly, love her. But Jeff is amazing. He did our logos a couple of years ago, has his own business, and has been wanting to get more involved. They have three young kids in the Webster District, and so he agreed to take over for central treasurer. So we're excited.
Great, great.
So, yeah.
So in the end, we filled them.
Yeah.
Somehow it comes together.
It's amazing to me. I'm always white knuckling it, and April going, "I'm not sure."
We're biting a lot of fingernails.
You know, one thing I'd like to compliment you both on, and I hope you can tactfully suggest to the new people, is the fact that you got to so many of the individual PTSA meetings. I understand what an incredible burden that is, but it really, it made it seem like you were part of each individual PTSA versus, you know, central is this, you know, fictitious thing over here. You know, people refer to you at the Place Wyman Liaison by first name, and they'll say, "Do you think Allison's coming tonight?" And I say, "Well, I haven't heard from her." You know, I think that really.
Yeah, it shows continuity.
And I wonder if there's a connection between that and membership. I don't know, but.
I will be elementary VP along with my Schrader Chair, so I will still be going to the elementary meetings.
Wonderful.
And we do have a secondary person, and so we're going to kind of talk to her and see if she'll come, you know, and stuff to the secondary ones, too. But we agree, that was a good connection.
Yeah, we had, when we only had one president, we were very concerned about that, because that's the first thing that's going to fall by the wayside, quite frankly. It's just, it's a big job.
It would be too much, yes.
So we had already been approaching our secondary and primary VPs to say, "Okay, this leadership team's going to need to step up and go to some of these meetings, too, if we're going to continue that continuity." So I think that will work out. And I think, too, as programming chairs, you'll see us in the schools for the programs that we really want to get the word out. And, you know, it's one thing to send them an email, it's another to show up in person and say, "This is really, really important, so please push it out to your folks here at Spry, or, or Plank, or wherever we are at night." And I think that will bring some more continuity as well. Because I understand what you're saying, that continuity is important, because I wasn't feeling it when I was at State Road as a Chair, so.
And we did get a lot of good connections with the building principals. I think that was the, really, the nice feel. And for Allison and I, our big push the past two years has been secondary engagement, and we are just thrilled with the new PTSA volunteers we're getting by some of these fun things we're doing. And, you know, I've said it before, the elementary buildings, the PTSA runs itself with the events and stuff. But at the secondary level, these kids need it. They need so much more, and so that's something her and I both are so passionate about, and we have met so many parents who have truly felt the same. And I feel like we've made a lot of great connections, not only at the elementary level, but at the secondary level with the building principals as well.
And I think that whole theme of partnership, of driving, making sure we build partnerships and relationships, helps with that continuity and that feeling our presence. And actually asking building chair and committees to come in and help us with, like, the WTA book drive, where we had to sort and go through all that. It was a great place to just stamp and sort and talk. It was kind of like, it was kind of like coffee talk. Just you're sorting books while you do it. So it was fabulous. So we'd like to see that kind of partnership continue, and we will be promoting it from behind the scenes moving forward.
But thank you all so much for all your support. Allison and I have a little something for each of you, and we just, you know, this is probably, besides having my three boys, one of the most rewarding things I've ever really done. And, of course, I couldn't have done it without one of my very good friends, but it's just, it's been a great experience, and I just can't thank all of you enough for all of your wonderful support you give our district. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
You've both definitely had a huge impact on this district, and I think when you're, the events that you do that bring people together and make it fun, doesn't feel threatening. It feels engaged, and that's, that's the crux of it, that makes people feel cared for, that makes them want to show up, and you've just done such a great job at that sincerity. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we love it. I love that part of it.
Yes, yes.
You're welcome. That's wonderful. Thank you.
Sweet treat for later. Oh, you're welcome, Tammy. Thank you very much.
You better be.
Is there food in here?
Wouldn't that be nice?
We're glad you're not going far.
Although, maybe we should have. Ooh, it's a Kittle Burger chocolate. Which is rare. Oh, yeah.
I want to do it briefly.
Yes.
But I haven't eaten dinner yet, so I'm not going to eat it yet. It's a Kittle Burger choc, I bet.
It is choc.
They have, they have little choc, oh, yeah. Oh, you should go in there. So, caramels, mints, oh, oh, yeah.
Crazy, that's why you wouldn't buy choc. But they're big.
Just share it.
Oh, how nice. Everybody gets.
Send your son down. Married? Oh, I know.
Thank you, ladies, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, you, too.
Moving back to our regular business, visitor speaking time. The Board of Education invites the public to comment on matters regarding the school district. The public comment section of the meeting is a time for the Board of Education to listen. As a courtesy, we ask that you limit your comments to no more than three minutes. Comments naming specific personnel should be addressed privately or in writing to the Board in order to protect individuals' rights. Matters that would infringe upon student privacy will not be addressed in this public forum. With that being said, is there anyone present who would like to address the Board? Seeing none, we're moving on to board business. New business, recommending the approval, we received the April Treasurer's Report. Does anybody have any feedback or questions about that? Brian, do you want to?
Nothing really to update on the April Treasurer's Report. That was different than last month.
Okay, can we have a motion, then, to approve the April Treasurer's Report?
So moved.
In a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I'm going to hit the hands.
I got, okay. Being visual. Moving on, next item on the agenda is our Board Liaison Assignments and Committee Participation. So we've talked about doing things a bit differently. We know that everyone, people get attached to their, their buildings that they represent as PTSA liaisons, but we're certainly welcome to entertain.
You missed audit. You're looking at a different doc.
I, you know what, I'm looking at the draft. Okay. Here, you want mine? Thanks. You're right, thank you. The internal audit risk assessment, did you hear? Okay. So.
So the risk assessment was, this was the first one we've had done in about five years. Internal auditor came about past six months and was doing interviews and checking out all of our processes and procedures for the district, and came up with quite a lengthy report on the district overall, on several areas. And that, you know, the way I always describe it is, we have our independent audit, our external audit, which is external is money, internal is process. So he's just looking at all of our process, where we could be better, and a lot has changed in the five years, especially around technology. be better, and a lot has changed in the five years, especially around technology. So I was happy to see that we don't have any high-risk areas, but some moderate-risk areas that you'd like to look into further. So once you get the risk assessment, then for the next three years, we'll pair into some of those specific areas and audit those. So the focus for this upcoming year, 1920, we do an audit of the technology program, not only the technology fixed assets, but also looking at some of those things like spyware and malware, and how susceptible are we to intrusions like that. Maybe do some tests of, with fake emails, and, you know, see where our vulnerabilities are. And that's really the whole point of the internal audit, is to kind of make our procedures a little bit better when it comes to that, so. Any other questions on that report?
I gotta tell you, at the audit committee, it was a good report. It really was. So, you know...
Lot of information.
We should be proud of it.
Yeah. And I think, and you keep taking back more and more, which gives you more oversight in terms of WBO and classroom funds and all those club funds. So I think that goes a long way toward tightening up how things are not as well.
So any other questions on the, on the report?
Okay, then can we please have a motion to accept the internal audit risk assessment as reported by Maria?
I'll second.
Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Thank you. The donation acceptance for the Aquatic Center, Mike, you were just talking about that the other day?
Yes.
Yeah.
And here it is.
Yeah, we, that's true, it was, yes.
Yep, happy to report that the Webster Swim Association would like to make a donation to the district for $15,000 to offset the cost of a new scoreboard at the Aquatic Center. It's hard to believe that the scoreboard, that that, the facility is 17, 18 years old now, a lot of the stuff that has gone in there. So starting to show some, some, you know, some issues, especially around the electronics, because they're in the environment of a high humidity pool. So, and we've taught, I think we talked about that through the budget season, that we need to start looking at that facility and replacing some of the stuff. But the scoreboard is near and dear to the swim association's heart, our heart too, because it's used for all the competitions, and, you know, some of the electronics are starting to fail, and, you know, we can't find, it's difficult to find parts. So one of the things that we're looking at, that I've put in the memo to you, is, as part of the 2018 capital project, Schrader will have a project number with the state. So that, in essence, anything that happens in Schrader becomes aid-eligible. So we're looking at, as soon as we get that project number, doing this as part of that project to make it adable. You know, with some of, you know, the design costs aren't as high as we anticipated, so I think we have some savings there that we could turn and invest this back into the facility as part of that project and make it adable. Whereas if we just bought it out of buildings and grounds, it wouldn't be.
We certainly appreciate the generosity of the Webster Swim Association and thank them very much for this generous donation.
Any other questions, though?
Okay, sure. Can we have a motion, please, to accept this donation?
I'll make a motion that we accept this generous donation.
And I'll second.
Second by Jan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Next on the agenda, we have our liaison assignments. So as I mentioned earlier, we're in conversation about possible changes, and it's certainly up to everybody to maintain just the way it is, if you're more comfortable with that. We'll begin with Monroe County Legislative. Jan, are you still interested in?
I am.
Okay. And labor relations, Linda serves there.
I will be going to probably labor information.
Okay, Cindy, do you have that adding, Mike?
We can have more than one.
Right. Yeah, then I, I would like to add my name to Legislative. Now that I have a, an assistant to, now I have an assistant to my babysitting duties, I can sneak out a little bit early and go to the meetings.
We can rise together.
I'll be coming from that side.
That's right. First Wednesday of the month.
Yeah.
Double three.
I can do information exchange so that we even out. Is that not...
No, it still is, and I've agreed to be co-chair again. I just really value what happens at those meetings. I think it's excellent. Executive Committee and Steering Committee, Carmen and I, yep. So Cindy, you've got those additions. So District Community Committee Audit, we have Mike and Sue.
I'm game.
Yes, as long as Brian can stand us.
Not as much as I love Policy Committee meetings.
There is the gauntlet.
And Mike, did you say that you might be interested in Policy, or?
Yeah.
It's a prestigious, prestigious position, you know.
Well, I, I...
So, yeah, you're in.
Yeah, okay.
In Budget Advisory, we all rotate. That seems to work very well. When, Linda? For sure. And Sue's still willing?
I'm willing to sub. You, you made all the meetings, right?
Yes, they did.
Okay, yeah. But yeah, let me know.
I love it.
And Strategic Planning, I'd like to continue there. Sue and Jan, yeah.
Yeah.
Did you have three per committee, right? Because I'll, I'll do one of them too, whichever, wherever.
Do you want to do when with me?
Sure.
Okay.
It's the second, usually the second Wednesday.
Okay.
At noon, but we could do it together.
Sure, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And then, for some reason, you both can't go, just let me know.
Yeah, and they, and, yeah, there's different committee meetings as well, so...
Okay.
Okay.
Building assignments.
Sue had an idea about building assignments. I think we should talk about it.
Yeah, I was, I was just thinking that, well, two, two thoughts that I had. One is, you know, maybe we should rotate, meaning, you know, I mean, I've been at Schlegel for a long time now. I'm, I'm happy to move or, or stay, whichever, you know, however we want to do that. But I was also thinking it might be a good idea if we each attended a PTSA meeting at each of the schools, just once, you know. You know, you just bring a guest kind of thing. Because you don't get to meet everybody, and it's just nice to know, you know, who you're talking about, or who, you know, who you're meeting with, and it's nice for them to see who the board members are, because if you're always at one school, then you only know the one board member that goes to your school.
Sure.
That's something that, I know it's a commitment, it's a bigger commitment than what we have now, but...
I like the idea.
I think it's a great idea.
It is.
Yeah. I think it's a really good idea. A little more visibility.
We'll be able to know more too, once the PTSA calendar is published.
Okay.
Make sure that we don't, for example, we had conflicts with Schrader this year.
Right.
That was very unfortunate, but...
Right. Where we can... But now a lot of the schools are just meeting four times a year. Right. So it makes it a little bit easier, yeah.
And then we could do a schedule or something.
Yeah.
We can sign up, yeah.
Yeah, no, that's a good idea. Okay.
So do we want to keep the same base school?
No, I, I was only at the WIT for one year, so I wouldn't mind staying for another year, but I'll, I'll do one of the secondaries too.
Okay.
You might want to look at Willinkers Spry.
Okay, either one of Spry.
I, I, I'm going to stay with what I got.
You want to stay with Will?
The, the secondary buildings, and I'll, I'll stay at, I'll...
At Clem South?
Clem South, okay.
And then I'll go Spry. Unless, unless you want to do it, Jan.
No, I'm fine. At Clem North. All right. And then I can fill in Plank North until.
Okay.
If you just want to have a name.
Okay.
I'll stay at State Road. And secondary, we do try to rotate and just make sure that we've, that somebody's covering. So I think we do a pretty fair job of sharing those emails ahead of time, just to make sure somebody's committed to attend. Okay. Terrific. Are we okay?
Sound good? Everybody good?
Thank you, Cindy. So next on the agenda is the Board, our district 2019-2020 goals. And there are only slight edits to these goals, as we feel they still embody the work and purpose and mission and vision that we're trying to accomplish, and are tied very well to the strategic planning survey results that we just reviewed. Having said that, does anybody have any recommendations or edits they'd like to see?
I think it's an excellent idea that we decided to prioritize a statement under each goal, because it's really realistic, and yet I think it will drive our work.
Right. But it also keeps everything in the forefront as well.
Right.
I think it's very good. Yep. I make a motion that we accept the Board Goals as written.
Second, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Yes. Motion carries, yes, there. It's excellent work.
Yep. If we do say so.
Vote on the liaison. Okay. Okay. We will backtrack a little bit and vote to accept our discussion and the liaison appointments as agreed upon, okay? Moved by Linda, second by Mike, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
unanimous, thank you. So moving on to our final business, and that would be the consent agenda. Everyone's had a chance to review all the information contained in there.
Yes.
Yep.
Any questions? Can we have a motion?
I, I just had one quick question.
Yes.
Certified regular substitutes. Is that a substitute that works every day, like a, it's...
Are you talking about your DM?
Uh, no, no. Certified regular substitutes, what does that mean? Just... Dave? Dave? What is a certified regular substitute?
Certified regular substitute is something that, aside from a long-term substitute, we have, they've been qualified, they have a degree, their certificate versus a, someone that has a bachelor's degree.
Oh, so they have actual teaching certificate? Right. Okay, but does that mean that they have a permanent job, or they're just a substitute as needed?
They get a, they get a different rate.
A higher rate.
Okay, they get a different rate. That's what, that's what it means, okay.
And they, and they qualify for long-term experiences as opposed to a, for DM sub that might just have a bachelor's degree and only work day by day.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Okay?
Okay.
Okay, with the rest of the items in the consent agenda, can we have a motion, please, to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
By Jan, second by Maria, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. And that brings us to the conclusion of our meeting. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Sue, second by Linda, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Thank you all for being here.